Where's Tony?
He's, uh, in his office.
He run away?
I think he was on a phone call.
Was he? Went to parking ban, huh? What's that, Saturday?
Let's see, Saturday, yeah, that's correct.
How you all doing? Be all set for Christmas? Get your presents ready? Have you been good boys? That's the question, if you don't, you know? You don't know? I bet not. Pedro, don't put this up again. Altogether, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice in the world.
Thank you.
Uh, my opening comments, uh, before I begin, I want to let everyone know that I will not be running for reelection in April. I appreciate very, very much the citizens of the town putting me in this office for many years. I enjoy serving, serving the town and Nahat and the people of the town and Nahat. And I'm very, very grateful for that. I've always put Nahat first. And the future selectmen, I hope, when they come up here, new selectmen, I know, if they keep Nahat first instead of themselves or any personal agenda items, it would be great. I've always put Nahat first and the people of Nahat first. And I want to thank you, each and every one of you in the town, for electing me and voting me in, uh, a member of the board for the past, I won't, many years. I thank you and I appreciate it very, very much. The winter parking ban goes into effect, I believe, Saturday, the 21st. Uh, the, uh, the hours of, all vehicles must be parked off the street during the hours of 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM, uh, from December 21st through March 20th. I remind everyone, the 24th Annual Tommy Hutton Christmas Parade is this Saturday, December 21st, starting at 6:00 PM. And thank you to Ross Puleo for again organizing the parade. And, uh, the many things that she, Ross, has done over the years. For not only for the police department, for the parade, and for the citizens of the town. The month of January, the Board of Selectmen will be meeting next year. January 9th is our first meeting, and January 23rd. That's a change from first and third to actually second and fourth. Am I correct? Yeah. And the new business, before I get to new business, I guess, um, the Legion, why don't you guys come up first, get the mic and...
Can I just?
Sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't ask you for your comment.
No, just very briefly, uh, I've been a selectman for about eight months now. And, uh, that's given me a small glimpse into your service for the past 38 years. And, um, just, you know, for Richie and for the rest of the town to know, you know, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of commitment. There is a, there's a personal sacrifice involved. Uh, there's an emotional burden involved. And, uh, you know, generation, literally generations of Nahaters owe you a debt of gratitude, Richie. Thirty-eight years ago, the current residents, and frankly, residents that are just being born right now, uh, will benefit from the sacrifices that you've made in, uh, 38 years, honestly, uh, it's like superhuman. And no one's, you know, in sports, they have records and people say, you know, that's never going to be broken. And, uh, this is a record that I'm sure will never be broken. And we really, we all owe you just a huge debt of grati- gratitude. So, thank you very much, Richie.
Thank you. Think back over the 38 years and, um, and it wasn't for the Legion being here tonight, I, one of my biggest things that I remember is the dedication of the Richard Davis Memorial, and also creating the Veterans Park for years to come for you guys. We'll never forget the veterans. Okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, um, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, my name's Toby Quark, uh, 296 Castle Road. And I'm the chairman of the committee that's bringing the Wall That Heals to Nahat. Committee's here, Wayne Noonan, Peter Prestition, Frank Godara, and Ed Manzano. There's one correction I need to make to the event request. Uh, we have down there, the title of the event is the Moving Wall. The actual, uh, title needs to be changed to The Wall That Heals. And the organization behind it is the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. So, that's, needs to be corrected on the event request. Uh, the dates are the, uh, 30th of July through the 2nd of August, 2020. That's a Thursday through a Sunday. And the location is the Lowlands Ball Field, the parking lot, the, uh, Veterans Memorial Park, and the Nahat Life Saving Station for those dates. Um, we've coordinated with the town administrator on some of the details. We're really in just the beginning planning phases of it. We do have a website that people can, uh, log on to to get more information and to donate. And I'll take your questions.
Well, I, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of the town, I appreciate the American Legion sponsoring the wall coming to Nahat. I think this is going to be huge. I think it's a, uh, it's a great event. And if a lot of people haven't seen the wall, this is, this replica of the wall, the actual wall. And, uh, I wanted to thank you, you guys for putting this all together and then bringing it to Nahat. And, um, I want to let the citizens of Nahat know that it costs around $10,000 to bring this wall in. And, uh, we could use donations, we, the Board of Selectmen and the town, to the American Legion, make your checks out to the American Legion. They're paying for all this. And, um, and I just, I'm very, very proud that you've initiated this coming to Nahat. I think the people and honoring the Vietnam veterans at the same time. This is a great event and, uh, great to see, a lot, many of you have already seen it in Washington and elsewhere around the state. And for this to come to Lowlands, uh, it's a great, 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 it's going to be a great event. And behalf of the board and the citizens, I want to thank all of you. The committee, Wayne, all the whole group, the whole bunch of you, to put this all together, I think it's just going to be a fantastic event. And Tony's already advised the board that it's been changed from October to July. And I think, uh, he'll make arrangements to make sure the Lowlands is cleared and, actually, he's planning on cleaning up that whole area. He's got some money he's going to get available and, uh, make sure that, uh, the areas probably, of course, people can park in Lowlands and wherever they're going to have to park. Maybe they can park at the Coast Guard Station too, probably, if they want to walk over. But again, I want to thank you, all of you, for doing this. This is a great, great, not an achievement, but a great event. Thank you.
Thank you.
The winter parking ban starts this coming Saturday. And, uh, as I said, goes through the 20th. So, we need to keep everything off-street parking for 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And then, uh, the Christmas parade, this is December 21st, starting at 6:00. In the month of January, our next meeting will be next year, starting on January 9th and the, and the 23rd. Uh, so we, we changed it from the first to third because of the closeness of the New Year, so that's it. Would you like to say anything, Josh?
Uh, nope, ma'am.
Okay. On the new business, uh, what is that, A?
Meeting minutes.
Yep.
So, uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the meeting minutes of October 17th, 2019.
I second the motion. Further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
This is the liquor licenses. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal applications for 2020, excuse me, to be approved by the A-B-C-C. Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, club license, all alcoholic beverages. Nahat Knights of Columbus Building Association, Inc., 17 Relay Road, Relay Yard, club license, all alcoholic beverages. Goodell's, Inc., doing business as Bayside Restaurant, 1 Southwick Avenue, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. Atlantic Functions, Inc., doing business as Ocean View, 0 Willow Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. Play It As It Lies Golf Management, 1 Willow Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. R and C Convenience Store, Inc., doing business as Seaside Variety, 141 Nahat Road, package store license, all alcoholic beverages. Tides, Inc., Tides at Nahat, Inc., 2B Wilson Road, restaurant license, all alcoholic beverages. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is, uh, Victor's licenses. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve common Victor's licenses as stands alone or in connection with liquor licenses, liquor license, for the year of 2020 for the following establishments. Atlantic Functions, Inc., doing business as Ocean View, 0 Willow Road, Tides at Nahat, 2B Wilson Road, Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, Goodell's, Inc., doing business as Bayside, 1 Southwick Avenue, Nahat Knights of Columbus Building Association, doing business as Nahat Knights of Columbus, 7 Relay Yard, Seaside Variety, 141 Nahat Road, Seaside Pizza, 149 Nahat Road, Dunkin' Donuts, 2A Wilson Road, Nahat Play It As It Lies Golf Management, 1 Willow Road, Nahat. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to approval of all inspections and payments of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
I'll say in the motion. The discussion, I want to, I have the townspeople realize that all these establishments have been inspected by the various building, plumbing, inspectors, and approved by the town manager. And all payments have been, uh, paid and updated. And so, that's it. The motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, on a similar theme, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following entertainment licenses for 2020 for the following establishments. Nahat Knights of Columbus, 17 Relay Yard, five TVs, five musicians, DJ, and pool table. Nahat Country Club, 280 Nahat Road, TV, live music, DJ. Functions, Inc., doing business as Ocean View, 0 Willow Road, live music, DJ. Goodell's, Inc., doing business as The Bayside, 1 Southwick Avenue, jukebox, seven-piece orchestra, non-amplified. Tides. Tides at Nahat, uh, 2B Wilson Road, 10 TVs, two amusement devices, live music, and karaoke. Play It As It Lies Golf Management, 1 Willow Road, four TVs, live music, DJ, outside entertainment, subject to Exhibit A of license, of, excuse me, of lease agreement. And further, that the release of said licenses are subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines, and payments to the town of Nahat.
Motion, I'll second the motion for discussion. Further discussion? All those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Uh, and this is back to the, uh, the wall. Uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Wall That Heals, Vietnam Veterans Memorial, at the Lowlands Parking Lot Baseball Fields from July 29th to August 3rd, 2020.
I will second the motion, discussion. As I told you earlier, I appreciate very much the Legion, the American Legion of Nahat, bringing the wall to Nahat. This is going to be a huge event. And, uh, I want to advise the townspeople, if, it costs about $10,000 to bring the wall here, so we're looking, they're looking for donations, so are we. But, uh, anything you can do and chip in would be a great, great help to us and to the American Legion. And of course, I'm, I'm hoping that they raise the $10,000 very quickly, especially, and this is just before Christmas and New Year's, but we've got a few months to have you donate. You have plenty of time. And this would be just an outstanding event. It's going to be, uh, to bring that wall, uh, here to the town of Nahat, the smallest community out of 351 cities and towns. This is huge. This is great, great, and I think it's, uh, July, I know Tony's made arrangements with the softball fields and softball people and all that to make sure it's, uh, the Lowlands is cleared. I know he's gonna, he's been giving us plans of how he's gonna spruce up the whole Lowland area. He's got some money to do it, and so, we'll make sure that area's, uh, looking in great shape for the wall. And for the people to visit, of course, they can park in Lowlands, or actually, they can walk. Half the town can walk to it, so. And, uh, on behalf of the board again and the citizens of Nahat, I want to thank the American Legion and the committee to get this organized and, uh, bringing in that wall. That's going to be a huge event. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just follow up with that, that as we get closer to the event, we'll make sure to, um, announce logistical details to the community. As, you know, obviously, in the middle of the summer, with parking, beach parking on the weekend, you know, we're going to work all that out. Couple different ideas we're working out, but we'll make sure to keep people informed as we get closer to the event.
And we'll make sure there's security on the wall, uh, 24/7, with, uh, the, uh, the Chief of Police, to make sure that no one, there'll be plenty of security down there for that. To make sure it's covered 24/7 while the wall's here. Some people, no. Who knows? But we just want to make sure there's plenty of security. It will be lit up 24/7 at night, you know, so like, use lights, so that people can visit at night too. Okay, um, all those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Again, thank you.
Next one is, uh, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the new book talk by bestselling authors TJ Mitchell and Judy Melanick, Melanick, for January 8th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
I will second the motion. Discussion, all those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Up is, uh, oh, all right, this is, uh, Extended Hours for Tides on New Year's Eve. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the extension of hours of operation for Tides Restaurant to 2:00 AM on January 1st, 2020.
I'll second their motion. All those in favor, single by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Next one is the Cemetery Rules. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the revised cemetery rules and regulations as presented.
I will second the motion. Is there any, any discussion from the cemetery trustees?
I have some, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The regs that are in your book,
Right.
are the, are the ones that you had last week.
Right.
The ones I just handed you with the green
Right.
highlights are the most recent.
Yep.
Uh, we, we, um, actually, Mary Lowe, uh, worked hard to clean up a lot of the fonts and texts and
Okay.
the way that they're arranged. If, I'm going to just kind of run through some of the changes that are in here, and if you guys want to
Sure.
speak on any of them. Um, most of the changes that the committee has proposed to you, the board, are cleanup or housecleaning to the regs. Things that, um, the regs were written are, uh, were back in the early 90s, I believe. And, and some of the procedures have changed since then. There are some, uh, substantial differences on, in some of the regs, but for the most part, it's cleanup. For instance, in the first, uh, under Rules and regs, under number one, updating which sections they're referencing to, because, um, when it talks about, how lots in the Greenland Cemetery will be sold, sections five and six both speak to that. Before, it only mentioned section five. Much of, you know, the way that payments are made and when the way we receive paperwork, sometimes we have, um, services on the weekends and they don't actually come here to the Town Hall and that paperwork is done actually at the, at the cemetery. So, we fixed much of that language. Section five, subsection B, previously, um, if there was a special condition for someone to purchase a lot that, um, is the immediate, uh, family member of a town resident but doesn't live in the town, it would go to the approval of the selectman. Here, we added "or" town administrator, because once again, sometimes this happens quickly and because of the open meeting law, providing the town administrator the ability to make that decision because of timing without being able to get a board, a selectman meeting. Also in this section is, uh, the discussion that we had at the last Board of Selectmen meeting with space, limited space at the cemetery. So, the committee really would like to encourage that cremations, initial purchases of lots, if they're cremate for cremations, that they go into cremation lots. That they're not purchasing a full, um, a full burial lot for a cremation. However, there is flexibility built into this language for, um, the Board of Selectmen in, in certain situations, say you have someone, um, who passes away that wants to be cremated, but their spouse or children would not, they could come to the Board of Selectmen and, um, make that case and we can, so there's flexibility built into it. Uh, but the idea there is to encourage cremation lots for, for cremations. We also, we also added some, uh, the, the pricing, actually, that was on some of the cemetery rules and regs and paperwork wasn't up to date, so we made that up to date. We didn't change any of the fees, but we just updated it. And another big piece here that we're going to try, that you'll see in here, is the town purchased American flags for our veterans. We put those out in, for Memorial Day. And right now, they stay up until, uh, Veterans Day. However, they end up becoming worn down over the summer. So, what we're proposing, what the committee's proposing, is that we put them up for Memorial Day for two weeks, and then we take, then we remove them, and then we put them back up again, Veterans Day for two weeks, and then remove them.
That's fine.
To get, to get a little bit more life and they'll look more fresh, uh, for, for Veterans Day.
Don't, don't forget if the, you have to replace them, go ahead and replace those out of the cemetery fund. Yes?
Just one of the things is, yes, you have to replace them every year. We, so we buy about 500.
Oh, you do?
It's like $500. So, this way, if we do it for two weeks, two weeks, we can get like three or four years out of the flags.
Great.
You know, it's, it's a burden, because you come up there, it looks so lovely, but don't, you know how windy it is up there?
Yeah.
The flags get tattered, I have to take them now, I can't replace them.
Yeah.
Because we don't have replacement flags. So, this way, two weeks for Memorial Day, two weeks for Veterans Day. We, a week before Veterans and a week after Veterans.
That'd be great, Dave.
And, and that's just the town-owned flags? So, if people would like to put flags throughout the summer on, on, uh, family members' graves, they can. Uh, we typically won't remove them unless they become worn out and, and unsightly. But there's, we're not changing the rule as to when you can have flags there. We're just changing the procedure as to the town-owned flags and how long we're going to leave those up for.
Yeah, but they need permission from the, from the cemetery people, to make sure before they put them in. We just can't have people putting, you know what I mean? We just can't have people putting, you know what I mean? And these are usually for veterans and, yeah.
It's all on the veterans.
Right, yeah. That's, that's, that's good, that's very good.
I'll just say, the committee and Mary worked really hard on this.
Good.
I know we were hoping to get it done at the last Board of Selectmen meeting and thank them for spending some time to clean up some of the, some of the old, you know, text and font and making it a little bit more easy to read and support the changes presented to you.
We can vote on that.
Yeah. The motion's been made? Or you wanna make a motion?
And I think we, we made the motion, that was our discussion.
And I second it.
Yep.
Where else did it go?
It's all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck, and thank you for changing and working on the new regulations. I know you spent time and extra effort to make sure, you know. And by the way, as I told you earlier, last meeting, the cemetery never looked better under your gardens, okay? They're really, you know, if you ever need extra help, just see Tony. We've sent the troops down to help you, assist you, and make sure that cemetery, you know, and you identify and drop dead.
The next one, actually, on the agenda is a vote to surplus
Yes.
The old outboard and old inflatable and trailer that, for the Nahat Fire Ocean Rescue. If you don't mind holding on that vote, that we may be able to repurpose the either-or, any of that equipment, maybe potentially for Nahat Sailing Program or Harbor Master, something within the town prior to surplusing it. We're still working out some of those
Okay, yeah.
Details, but we had already put it on the agenda.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, Josh briefed me on that, and that, if we hold off, he wants to hold off on that.
Yeah, and I did, I just caught Richie just before the meeting, but so in speaking with Austin Antrim at the Fire Department, they would like to continue with the surplusing of the outboard, maybe unless the Harbor Master has a need, but because that has quite a bit of value. So what I was gonna propose is that we surplus the outboard and hold off on the inflatable and trailer in case those are of value to the Sailing Program, which has been looking for, has been wanting to procure an inflatable. And of course, the trailer would be helpful, because it's matched with the boat. So is that consistent with, yeah? And so I, I did send an email just, just this afternoon to the Sailing Program, you know, suggesting that we get together and look at the boat, and they can think about whether it meets their needs and whether they want to undertake the repairs and that kind of thing, so.
The, the vote, that if you take a vote tonight, it's authorizing the surplus of those pieces of equipment. We don't, you know, we can even change that if need be, if anything changes. So if you want to pursue, continue with the surplus of the outboard, and for some reason, something changes, we can come back to it later if we need to, so.
So I'd say let's, let's, let's move to surplus the outboard and just defer the other, the boat and the trailer to the next meeting, and by then, we should have a good read whether those are of value to the Sailing Program.
Okay.
Josh, you wanna, wanna carry over both of them, the two weeks?
Unless there's, I don't know if there's a reason, is there some end-of-year need for surplusing, or?
No.
Okay, maybe we just
Table those two.
Table both, we'll just table both of them and take them up to the next meeting.
And then you could, you, you meet with the people, you know.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Take a look at the boat.
Yep.
All right, so we'll just defer that for now.
Dan, do we need to motion to?
No, we're just gonna, we'll just wait until next time, no need to take any action.
We have to sign the warrants. It says we just have to sign the warrant, right?
Yes.
We gotta vote.
This is, the next thing on the agenda is to sign the warrant for the special town election on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. You've already voted
Yeah.
To set that date, so you don't, there's no vote required, but we need to sign the warrant and get that posted, it's in here.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case everybody didn't catch all that, just a reminder, we do have a special election on January twenty-ninth to fill the vacant seat on the Board of Selectmen. This is just a paper ballot, come in, fill out your ballot and leave. There's no discussion or, you know, moderator function meeting.
Have we said, do we need to meet with the moderator prior to that special meeting? No?
It's, it's not a special meeting, it's just, it's just an election.
And we need to make a motion to open the town warrant?
And then K, which flip to the next.
I am out of, oh, here we go.
Two K. So this, this next thing on the, on the agenda is opening the annual town meeting warrant for, this is, this is for the annual town meeting. So this is, we're officially opening the warrant tonight so that folks can begin to present articles per our town charter.
So with that, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to open the May sixteenth, twenty twenty annual town meeting warrant for submission of articles by all town boards, committees, personnel, and the public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant.
I will second the motion. Now, what's the date, Tony, they need to get all these articles in, in place by the end of?
It's in, is it in that motion?
No, that's not in the motion.
Oh, I believe it's January thirty-first, last day of January. It's in the bylaw, I'll double check, but I believe it's the last day of January.
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought it was in the motion.
We talked about possibly changing those bylaws as a result of moving this out, but I think as it stands, it was the end of January, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So January thirty-first, right?
Yep.
Yeah. In favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you guys take a vote on two I to sign the warrant? I heard the discussion.
Um, we, we did not.
Two J, no.
We did not.
Two I, well, just, it's I, my thing is sign warrant for special town election.
Uh, we didn't take a vote on it, I didn't think we needed to vote on it.
They voted on it though.
They, they voted at a previous Board of Selectmen meeting for that.
To approve that, yeah, we approved that earlier.
To set the date, to set the date of the election. So this is just signing the warrant.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I want you to want to do both. Okay, you wanna do it again, or?
Yeah, we can do, if you have a motion.
Get it ready, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I didn't know you had that previous meeting, so.
Is that, you, any other report, Tony, that's it?
Uh, I have, there is no ongoing business unless you have any.
Um, do you have any? Okay.
Then if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I can give my committee update.
Sure.
All right, so, one thing that we've been trying to take on lately is really a, a record-keeping and an updating of our committees in town, our members of those committees, vacancies, and then developing a form for, to help improve meeting minute recordings and submission to the clerk, and also opening a process, developing a new process or a more transparent process as to what committee vacancies are available for folks to volunteer for. So it's, it's, it's quite the process of multiple rounds, and I gotta say, I really want to thank the, the chairpersons of each committee. You know, many of these committees have been around for a long time, some of them have many members, and the chairperson of these committees today may not have been the original, and so it's, there's, you know, they're reaching out to each of their members to get information, and it, it is quite the undertaking, and I appreciate all the, all the response that we've gotten so far. So we developed a form for committee chairs to fill out that we sent out back in October, looking for information about each of the committees, such as, about the members of those committees, such as, you know, names, updated email information, number of years served, term start date and end date, state ethics law certification status, as well as open meeting law training status. Many of the, the state ethics law requires, I think for volunteers, every three years, maybe, they have to get recertified.
Yes, I believe it's at least three years, yeah.
That they've been sworn in by the clerk.
Right.
So we sent that out in October to the chairs. We did receive a decent amount of responses in November. Again, a lot of undertaking, because the chairs have to then send that out to each of their committee members and get, you know, compile all that information, send it back to us, and, and like I said, some take longer than others. So I do, I, again, I really want to thank them. So now we're in the, we still have a couple more committees to gather information for. We're now consolidating that information. We're also double-checking some of it. You know, there's, like I said, some committees were formed many years ago, and the members that are on them now, actually, were not original members. So we're going back into, you know, town meeting minutes when those committees were formed and figuring out, you know, who, how many seats they're supposed to have, who appoints those seats, who has the authority to appoint those seats when there are vacancies. So we're, we're going through that process now, we, and we're still looking to get some more information. Next steps on that is to, like I talked about, a, a developing a form for, to improve meeting minutes. There's actually, on the Attorney General's website, there's a checklist, like a guideline that they provide, that we're gonna try and develop a form that committees can, it makes it a little bit easier to record minutes, make sure they're recording motions, kind of a checklist that they can then provide that to the clerk after each, each meeting for committees that have, haven't, you know, for members who haven't taken their open meeting law training, we may try to do a group training of some sort for that, where the A.G.'s office would actually come to Nahat and present some of those, that training to members. We also are hoping to figure out where all the vacancies exist, and then have potentially organize a committee fair and publicize where those vacancies are, and provide an opportunity for people in Nahat who are looking to volunteer on those committees to come to the Town Hall and speak with the chairpeople of each of those committees that have vacancies about, you know, what the mission of those committees are, what the schedule is like, you know, how much committed, you know, commitment of a commitment it would be for, for someone to volunteer for that. And then when, you know, develop a process for when those vacancies get posted, for when people are interested, you know, posting it for a certain amount, it's kind of like a, a more transparent way to announce to the town what seats are open and, and that they're available. Kind of like we did for the planning board, when that seat, when those two seats came up.
Right.
We posted on Facebook, we let people submit their resumes, kind, yeah, exactly.
Well, this is a great, great plan, you've got.
It's taking time, it's gonna, it's going to get into the new year. There are certain committees that have, you know, there are extreme circumstances where there are committees that, you know, like, like the Community Preservation Committee, their process is really starting to pick up in January. They have three open seats. One is a representative from the Recreation Committee, one's a representative from Open Space, and the third is an at-large, actually appointed by the Board of Selectmen. You know, so for that, as an example, or like we handled the ZBA earlier in the year, if there's an extreme circumstance that really, you know, they need members immediately because they're having trouble getting quorum, or, you know, it's that time of year that the, that the committees become inactive, we'll take it out of order. But it does, it is gonna take some time, it is gonna take some time to get, get it up to, up to date and make sure that everybody's up to speed on to, as their, you know, with their state ethics training and their open meeting law training.
Very good. I, I think, yeah, you're, this is, you know, it'll give an opportunity for other people that, if they, when you make up the master list and there's openings, people can apply for these positions. And, you know, and with the process. Did you notify the moderator and send out for his committees, or did you cover his, his appointments?
Once, we, we have a couple more that we're waiting to hear back from as to open seats that would fall under the moderator for his appointment.
Let him know, he'd, he'd be, you know, hopeful, because, you know, he's, he's very good, but, you know, and then people want to be, you know, on those committees, you know. That'd be very, this is a great, that's a great, you know, it kind of updates the whole, all these various.
We could have, we could have a committee just to do this committee update process. It's a lot of, it's, it is a lot of work, but we're good.
Just in case that wasn't clear to everybody, some of these committees are Town Administrator appointments, some are Board of Selectmen appointments, and some are Moderator appointments, so. Basically, the three categories, and, you know, this, I'm sure is a very much improved process, but, you know, while you go through this process, there have been some volunteers that have been waiting to hear, and I just want to encourage patience for those volunteers, well, patience and hopefully maintain your enthusiasm for serving the town while we go through this process. And I think it sounds like it'll, it'll be, we'll be able to draw from a bigger pool and have things a lot more organized. Also, I think the, the template for the meeting minutes is important, because that's something we've struggled with a little bit on some committees, so that'll help give them the guidance they need to know what really needs to be on those minutes to satisfy the requirements, so, sounds good.
Thank you. I am not on, on the agenda, but I would like to just update you. This morning, I met with Dan Coughlin, who's been hired to do an infiltration and inundation assessment of our internal sewer network. And tomorrow, I meet with Wright Pierce, the engineering firm hired to do the assessment on the sewer main and provide us a menu of options. Hope to be able to bring both of them in front of the board in January to present to the public those findings. We have, there's a lot, there, there's a lot of information to digest, especially when it comes to our internal system, because you could have, you know, a sewer line that has some spots on it that are critical repairs, some that are not so critical, so, you know, trying to capital plan, you know, how you're gonna approach the, the issues that we have is gonna take some time, but the wealth of information that I was provided today is a huge step going forward. But it, it's, it's, it's very, it's gonna be very costly. So anyways, I hope to be able to, I just wanted to provide somewhat of an update, that's not a full update, but we are getting there, and hopefully, we'll have both of those firms in front of the, in front of the board publicly to, to make presentations to the town as to, you know, the condition of our sewer infrastructure.
Yeah, we gotta make sure that the sewer's flowing.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that report is really critical, be, because we'll be, it'll help us prioritize and, you know, not be repairing things that don't need repair, but but get after the high priority items, so.
Well.
That's a really important report.
Plan the critical and then do the short range and long range planning on that whole pipe that we're going across.
I mean, as we saw on the linway break, some of these problems can be very specific, you know.
That was luckily the break that, you know, not, lucky for us, it wasn't our sewer main.
Yeah, no, I.
Unfortunately, you know, there was a, it was a, you know, very costly repair to Lynn.
Right.
But we were, we actually got a call from the state after that break because it shut down the linway for so long and caused so many issues that it sounds like the state is really looking to get involved, bring all the parties involved, us, Lynn, Swampscott.
Pipe down the linway.
And talk about the future.
Yeah.
And, and how to try to prevent, you know, the breaks that are occurring, it seems to be more and more often.
Well, that just tied up the linway for hours, you know, it was just, it was jammed all the way back and went all the way back to Market Street. Well, that's good, Tony, good. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Towne County, you have anything?
Uh, nothing for the open session.
Okay.
We do have an executive session coming.
Yeah, we're, I'm gonna, we're gonna move in a minute. Anything else? While we're in open session and after the, I declare that we need to go into executive session, necessary to protect the board of selectmen litigation position, this motion should be made to enter an executive session and before Josh makes the motion, we will not be coming back into regular session after the executive session. I'll adjourn the meeting to go into executive session and we will not be coming back into regular session. Josh?
I move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation and to not reconvene in open session. Litigation is Gretchen Benkert versus Nahathousen Authority, excuse me, Susan Bonner, Donna McDonald and Town of Nahat and it is pending in Suffolk Superior Court.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion, all those in favor, single by saying aye. Aye, the regular schedule, the regular meeting is over and I'm gonna adjourn that meeting and we'll be going into executive session with the attorneys. Yeah, right here, please. Thank you. Good night, Merry Christmas and have a happy holiday.